Pledge of Allegiance. We'll ask Commissioner Ortiz if he would lead us in the pledge.
Your Honor, hand it over your heart, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairperson Smith.
Present, I'm sorry.
Vice Chairperson Ashana Blah, not here at this point.
Not here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Present.
Commissioner Caravell.
Present.
Commissioner Richards.
Present, the last name is Richard, though.
Richard, oh, you know, there's an S on this, so I read it exactly the way it was.
Yeah, two first names, that's me.
Thank you, we will correct that for the record.
Oral communications. Please note the rules for meeting decorum on the screen. In the interest of time, these will not be read but be advised that the Planning Commission will adhere to these standards. They're not even on the screen.
They were, they were a moment ago.
There they are, okay. So this is a time for the public to address the Planning Commission and the Airport Zoning Commission for items not on the agenda. Please note that if an item is scheduled as a public hearing, you will have an additional opportunity to speak when the public hearing is opened or continued. Comments made now regarding items scheduled for a public hearing will not be included in the official record of public testimony for that item. If anyone would like to address the Commission on items that are not on the agenda, please come up to the podium. Please address your comments to the Commission as a body and not to individual commissioners directly. Only very brief responses may be given to questions asked on topics not on the agenda. Please keep your remarks to three minutes. Would anybody like to come up to the... Before you do, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce everybody to our interim Director of Planning and Q&amp;E Development, Sherry Rep. Lodeman, right over here. Sherry, welcome.
Thank you very much.
We're also extremely happy to have our Assistant City Attorney, Melissa, back with us after a few months. And we have a new Commissioner, starting tonight, is Commissioner Ryan Richards. Welcome to the Planning Commission. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing no one, I will close oral communications. Planning Commission and Airport Zoning Commission Consent Calendar, are there any items?
No, there are not.
Okay, we will recess the Airport Zoning Commission. A Planning Commission Consent Calendar. A consideration of Planning Commission and Airport Zoning Commission Minutes for the regular meeting of May 15, 2019. Is there a motion?
To the Chair, I'd like to just make a comment on this, these meeting minutes and the ones to follow. There really is no detail or summary whatsoever of what occurred, what was said in the meeting. So in the past, I've brought this up, that there should be, at the very least, a summary of what was discussed. And this basically just states the motion, and that's it.
Mr. Chair, if I can just comment. It's actually very customary for cities to do action minutes, because we now have new technology where we record your entire meeting. It's very easy for people to go back and be able to review the entire meeting without trying to summarize and/or maybe not capture what was truly said at a meeting. So typically with city councils, as well as all committee commissions and boards, most likely you will always see action minutes.
Okay, and that's fine. There has been situations in the past where we've tried to find out what exactly occurred during a meeting, and this was a while ago, and the meeting minutes or the recordings were no longer available, or, yeah, they were simply no longer available, so that's why I started mentioning this. But if it's something that's going to stay, you know, with the newer technology, that we're actually going to have it in perpetuity, then I don't mind.
Thank you, and I believe that is true. The technology now is much better than it used to be.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Caravell?
Yes.
Commissioner Richard?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you would need to abstain, because you were not here for the minutes, thank you. The vice chairperson is absent, and Chairperson Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Consideration of Planning Commission and Airport Zoning Commission Minutes for the regular meeting of July 3, 2019. Is there a motion to approve? Same comment?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Commissioner Caravell?
Yes.
Commissioner Richard?
Same.
The vice chairman is absent, and then Chairperson Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Continued public hearings. There are no items on continued public hearings. A new public hearing, Conditional Use Permit Number 2018 CU08. Now is the time and place to open the public hearing to consider Conditional Use Permit Number 2018 CU08. Associate Planner Maria Maherik will present a staff report.
Good evening, Commissioners. I will be presenting Conditional Use Permit 2018 CU08, and the property is located at 12043 Hawthorne Boulevard, and it's for a proposed expansion of an existing hotel that will be renamed to Shift Hotel. As you can see from the vicinity map, you can see where the subject's site is currently, when it is expanded. This illustrates the entire site, is right across the street from the Hawthorne Mall, which is currently occupied, a portion of it by LA County. And just before you hit 120th Street going north, the zoning map indicates that the zoning for this, for these two properties is C3, which is a commercial zone, and it is, it allows for hotels and the expansion of a hotel with the CUP. There are two existing parcels. The existing hotel, which is illustrated in yellow on the bottom of your screen there, and that parcel is approximately 17,586 square feet. The adjacent parcel is a small, two-unit commercial property, which is only occupied partially by a Chinese restaurant currently. The property owner owns both lots, and that's where the expansion will be occurring onto that adjacent lot to the north. This is just some photos of the existing site conditions of the existing hotel. It's a very well-kept hotel. It currently has 29 rooms and 29 parking spaces, that includes 18A stall. At the bottom of your screen are two additional photos, and that is the adjacent property. There's actually four parking spaces in the front, and there's, I neglected to write in, there were a couple, I believe, four more towards the back, which are accessed from Hawthorne Way. This particular building will be demolished to accommodate the expansion of the new hotel. This is the proposed view of the renderings of what the hotel will look like in its completion. As you can see on the bottom photo there, there's a little square where some of the signage is going to go for the hotel at some point, and that will require a separate permit that is a ministerial approval, it will not come to the Planning Commission. With this, I did pass around a materials board that I believe everyone hopefully had a chance to take a look at, and it's just illustrative of the materials that are being proposed, that will be used, and if you have any questions about that, you can certainly ask the applicant, they are here as well. So currently, the ground floor of the hotel, there's 20 parking spaces and 12 guest rooms. And once they expand, as you can see from the site plan, there will be a new café for the guests' food services, and not only the 20 parking spaces, but additional, an additional 29 interior parking spaces that will be underneath the first floor of this hotel. So this is the ground floor level. The second floor level will consist of 24 new guest rooms. There is a second floor already, so those will remain, they'll just be remodeled. There will be a new lobby and registration area, a hotel office, a lounge, as you can see from the screen here in this area. It will be open to the sky, well, to the second floor there. A small guest business center, a health and fitness center, and also a guest laundry. The third floor will consist of the last 13 guest rooms, a lounge, there'll be a guest meeting room and an employee lounge on this floor. So in total, there will be 49 guest rooms and 49 parking spaces, which is what is required by the code. That includes a couple of ADA parking spaces. In addition, which I neglected to mention, is on the ground floor, there will be, as you can see here, the area for the trash, which is right here at the bottom of the screen. And that will be fully enclosed and only open when there will be pickup of the trash. So there won't be any issues in terms of any loitering in that area. Now, and this is the highlight of this expansion of this hotel, which is the roof amenities that the owner is proposing. They are proposing a beautiful lounge area, coffee cart within these two containers, basically, here. They'll have some other lunch services that they'll be able to open and close, and the applicant can tell you a little bit more detail about what they're proposing there, but it'll be for the guests, and this is something that's not there right now. And they're also proposing some games, like a ping pong table, some lounge areas, some canopies for the exterior to protect you from the sun, and some plants. So it's going to be quite beautiful once they are completed with this. One of the things I did want to show you is, right in this area here, they will have a locked gate. From this area beyond, it will not be accessible to the public, because this is where all of the mechanical structures are on the roof. Landscaping. They are proposing some very nice landscaping. Obviously, most of the landscaping will be in this area here where the parking lot is open to the sky. It's going to be difficult for them to put landscaping within the parking structure underneath, so they're just proposing some gravel to keep it nice and clean. And one of the things that we did ask of the applicant was to put a beautiful trellis on the Hawthorne Way side with some climbing vines, because it's going to be just a solid wall, and it will make it quite beautiful for the residents and other uses that are behind on that street. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt PC Resolution 201909, approving the CUP for the expansion of the hotel with the maximum of 49 rooms, and the conditions as suggested by staff. We did put quite a few conditions on the resolution to ensure that there aren't any potential issues with parties or loud music, et cetera. And all of those conditions have been placed on the resolution. And that concludes my staff report. If you have any questions of me or the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the Planning Commission have any questions for the staff? This is a time for questions of the staff only.
Do the Chair have a question? So the rooftop amenities, would those just be open to the guests, or would they be open to the general public also?
So this is open to the guests, and, you know, if they have guests coming in, but it's primarily for the guests who are of the hotel.
Would, if they decided to open it to the general public to access the restaurants up there or the cafes, would that require a different approval, or?
So, you know, if the general public would like to come in, they, I believe that they would be able to, but if there's any special functions, they will need a special permit to do that. But primarily, it's for the guests.
Okay. One other question related to parking. The 49 spaces that you said were required, does that include employee parking, or is it just for?
It's just per hotel room, and that's what the code states.
Okay, thank you.
But I should note that the 49 parking spaces that are required, that assumes that it provides for any guests, any of the employees, anybody who may be doing business otherwise at the location. You know, hotels sometimes are fully occupied, but often they're not, so it's considered to be kind of a flexible parking design. I will note, in terms of the space that's up on the rooftop, we did have some concerns that it not be too available to the public, because we don't have excess parking.
That's true.
So we don't want to create any burden on the property. Certainly, if there's some overflow, we have street parking that's available, but if there's something that's unusual that's going to happen, we do want to know about it through the special events permit.
Yes.
Okay.
And I had a question. What's the height requirement for this zone?
So above four stories, it requires a conditional use permit. In many cases, if it's above 40, it's 45 feet, I believe you have to set it back a certain amount of time, a certain amount of distance, but this is just at 42 feet, and it's only three stories.
Okay. And then for the feasibility study, is that a requirement for the application, or is that something that they just provided?
No, it's a requirement per our code to submit a feasibility study, so we can ensure that this will be successful, and the need is there.
Okay, that's all my questions.
Okay.
Okay, is the applicant present, and do you wish to speak?
There's the applicant.
Would you like to come up and at least introduce the project? Since they're here.
It's your opportunity.
Sorry, I'm nervous. So the applicant is my mom and dad, I'm their eldest daughter. For us, this is, it's come full circle. You know, my parents have lived here for, well, we've lived here for 36 years, and just to see Hawthorne becoming what it is today, is just, for my mom and dad, it's like a complete circle. And so with me and my siblings, you know, stepping in and helping them and getting it to a more modern hotel where we would want to stay, is what our, you know, our goal is. We want to bring community together, we want to come back to our roots, so it's really a labor of love from where we all grew up, so. Do you guys have questions for us?
Thank you.
Just for the record, can you please provide your name?
Yeah, Shakti Naran.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the Commission on this issue? If so, why step up to the podium? Mrs. Lodeman, are there any documents to place into the administrative records such as late communications?
No, there is not.
Okay. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any final comments on this item or questions from the staff?
I like the design. I believe that this business would be a great asset to the city. I've seen this hotel in the city for a long time, and I feel that Hawthorne is attracting a lot more tourists, so this would be very beneficial to the city. I would recommend approval with three conditions, to limit the rooftop lounge area to a certain square foot size in the same area that's indicated on R-1, on Sheet R-1. And then, no solid fence or walls along that rear facade, as far as like the fencing is concerned, to allow it to be more open. And then no signs along that rear street facade. Those are my three conditions.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Can we discuss it now, or is it, do you have to close the public hearing?
Yeah. You can, you can just, no?
I hope we can always go back to the tape, too.
Okay, just to be able to ask the applicant.
Yes.
Oh, thank you for being up here. Did you hear?
Turn your mic on.
I'm so sorry. There we go. Were you able to hear the conditions that the Commissioner was suggesting?
Yes, but we just wanted a clarification on one of them, which was the fence.
Please, yes, go ahead.
Yeah.
So along that rear...
On Hawthorne Way, right?
In the back, yeah. So just asking that there not be any solid fence or walls along that...
You're talking about this one right here?
No, on the ground level.
On the ground level?
Like on the property line.
So adjacent to the landscaping that would be at the ground level, adjacent to the public parkway?
Yes.
I think we have, we don't have a solid fence right now.
There isn't.
Yeah, there's not, it doesn't show anything there now, just for like in the future.
Right.
As a condition that there not be any solid fence or walls.
I think the rendering was pretty close to what we were looking for, and it didn't really show a solid fence. It did show a glass wall, but not necessarily a fence. And there is plants in front of it, so there's landscaping in front of it, too. Is that what you're referring to?
As long as it's not solid, or, you know, would you be acceptable to something more decorative if they want to maintain it more private?
Yeah, like, maybe like wrought iron fence with like a hedge or vines, that would be acceptable.
Yeah, we're trying to make it modern, not necessarily like a, an enclosure.
Okay.
A welcome-in feature, so.
Okay. I support the conditions of the Commissioner, and let's see, I just want to congratulate you guys. It's a really great project, I think, really great addition for the city.
Thank you.
And, you know, I can tell you guys have a lot of pride in what you guys are trying to do, and it's really nice to see that family businesses undertaking this project as opposed to selling it to a big corporation and, you know, forgetting about it, so congratulations on that. One comment related to the roof. You're still going to maintain, if you block off, if you have a gate at the roof, I'm assuming it's going to have, it's going to be for emergency exit, right?
Right, it's going to be a long...
And so the only access to the roof would be through the elevator, right?
And the staircase.
Oh, you'll have stairs going up there as well?
Yeah.
Is that the one?
Goes all the way to the roof.
Oh, so that one does, okay.
Back staircase as well as the front.
Okay. Yeah, it looked like it was, it was blocked off, but, because the door is, yeah, graphically, I think it's reading incorrectly, but the door looks like it's blocked off by the, by the double doors to the elevator lobby.
I think that's the landscape drawing you're looking at.
That's, that's fine.
Which may be a little bit inaccurate, but...
Okay. Yeah, as long as you have that exit.
Actual plans do show it as being an open space.
Okay. That's it, okay.
Could we go back to the other three points that you had, Jason?
Did you need me to repeat them?
Yeah, so one of them was the fence in the front, and then the other one was the roof deck limitation.
Yeah, so just limiting to what you already have shown on there, on Sheet R1, R-1, so just a condition specifying the actual square footage of that area to limit that area to that specific square foot size.
Okay.
So that way, if you try to increase it, you have to come back to the Plant Commission to get approval for that.
Right, and I would suggest that the condition be read, something along the line that the applicant shall be in compliance with, the Plan R1, and shall be in substantial compliance with the size shown on that plan. Because the actual square footage may change slightly once they actually go through construction, depending on where their beams are and how they construct things, but I think it's a substantial compliance that you're looking for.
Yes.
Yes. I believe the other condition was regarding signs, and the applicant is required to apply for a sign program, so they'll be detailing all of the signs for the building, and we would be amending that condition to include a sentence that said, "No business sign shall be located on the rear of the building facing Hawthorne Way."
Yes.
And I would also suggest, for the additional condition that dealt with the fences or walls, we do have a Condition Number 25, that is currently discussing fences, and it currently indicates that "All chain-link fencing shall be removed along the perimeter of the property. Wrought iron gates and fencing shall be provided. Solid walls may be provided on some areas of the property where appropriate, as approved by the Planning Director." I would suggest the sentence, the second sentence where it says wrought iron gates and fencing shall be provided, I think we can say may be provided, because there are some locations where they may not need to have fencing of any sort, but if they are going to provide something, it needs to be wrought iron, and I believe that was your intent as well.
Well, it, really, I don't think we should dictate what material it is, as long as it's, it's something that's aesthetically pleasing, because if it's something more modern, they might want, like, I think the gentleman said, like a glass.
Okay.
Or something like that.
What we could say is that alternative materials shall be subject to the approval of the Director, and that way, if they do have glass or something else, I think your concern is most likely with having chain link reappear on the property.
Or a block wall.
Or a block wall, and in most cases, block wall should only be around structures that need to be protected and screened.
Yes.
Some, some...
If that's acceptable to you, then we'll make that modification to that condition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant, since we have him here?
Are you clear on the condition?
Yeah, no, thank you for that clarification.
Sir, I'll ask you in a second if there's a motion to include those conditions, and I'll come back and ask you one more time if you agreed to them, but at this time, is there any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I, do you have anything? Okay, I don't.
Okay.
I think it's a really great plan, I think it'll look very, very nice there. Okay, I now formally close the public hearing on this item and call on my fellow commissioners for a vote on this item. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion to approve.
Is there a second to the motion?
Is the motion to just approve the resolution, or would you like those conditions that were discussed to be added?
To approve with the conditions, sorry.
With the conditions, okay, as amended. So do you need us to go over them one more time? Actually, I think we should, probably, just for the benefit of the applicant. Okay, sorry to do this to you, but one more time. Okay.
We will be adding a new condition to the resolution, and that would be Condition Number 30, and it would indicate that the applicant shall limit the roof size of the, or shall limit the use of the rooftop as shown in Sheet R1, and all sizes shall be substantially in conformance with those shown on that plan. And then Condition Number 25 would be amended as it relates to the fencing, to indicate that it is, the word shall be changed to may as it relates to wrought iron fencing or gate, and we will also include the additional language that says solid walls or alternative materials may be provided on some areas of the property where appropriate, as approved by the Planning Director. And then the condition that relates to signs, which I don't remember what number that is, so I don't know if you have that. Well, we will figure out what number that is, but the condition that requires a sign program to be submitted will also be amended to stipulate that no business signs shall be provided along the rear... be provided along the rear portion of the building facing Hawthorne Way. What condition?
Number three.
Number three, thank you very much. It was too far up.
Me, too.
And so the intent of that would be, for example, the name of the hotel. Obviously, any signs that are required because of regulatory standards, as it may be, like no trespassing signs, or something dealing with the trash and receptacle area, obviously, we would provide for those, but the actual business sign would not be allowed along Hawthorne Way.
Okay, that's the motion with those changes. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion with those changes.
Okay, and before we vote on it, sir, I'm sorry, your name?
Jai Naran.
Thank you. Do you understand these new conditions, and do you accept them?
Yes, and we accept them.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Cher. Sorry to...
Thank you. Because a motion has been made and seconded, will the secretary please call for the vote?
Commissioner Ortiz?
Yes.
Mr. Cardeau?
Yes.
Mr. Richard? No, you've been here for the whole time, so you can vote. Thank you. The vice chairman is absent, and Chairperson Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will recess the planning commission, call back to order the airport zoning commission. Airport zoning commission consent calendar. Are there any items?
No, there are not.
Airport zoning commission new or continued public hearings?
No items.
Okay. Now we'll call back to order the planning commission concurrently with the airport zoning commission. Are there any administrative items?
There are no items, other than, thank you very much for inviting me to your city. So far, it's been a very nice employment for me, as well as a nice opportunity to be able to share and help the city.
I have a couple items already, right? Also, nice to be back, very happy to be back. Just very quickly, you may have noticed that there were some additional documents on your, in your packet. Let's see if I can recall all of them. This is just something that I'm providing, I provided it to the new commissioner, and I figured I may as well share it with the entire commission. One is Rosenberg's Rules of Order. It's just a kind of a cheat sheet on Robert's rules, in case you are interested in those types of rules. We have, we tend to use Rosenberg's, which is a little bit more flexible than Robert's. I think it's a kind of nice little summary of the rules. I also provided a copy of a resolution that applies to everyone, including employees. It has to do with reimbursement and other ethics issues. It's kind of a thick resolution that's, again, it's just to provide you information in case you are so interested in reading about ethics for our responsibilities and some of the rules that we have here in the city. The other document that I'm recalling is the Code of Conduct. That, you may, some of you may have already signed that, because it's a very old, basically, document. It's a resolution that was passed in 2004, I want to say. It includes a Code of Conduct. Basically, just you agree that you will treat each other with respect. It just has a number of different things, you know, that we want to just have everyone on the record agreeing to, that's all. So if you could sign it and give it back to me, I would appreciate it. That way, we have it on record for our new commission. And the last is a, kind of a planning 101 handbook. I put this together probably a year or two after I started, so it's a couple of years old. I did take a look at it, and it's all still substantively accurate and good, so I thought I would, again, provide that to the new commissioner, and I'd give it to everyone else. It's just basically leisure reading. If you get, you know, you're so inclined, might be a little bored. Take a look at the book.
Thank you.
Read a little bit about CEQA.
Can't wait.
Yeah, if you guys remember that, I gave it to you many, a couple of years ago. Yeah, fun, it was fun times, right?
Should all nod their head and say yes, with exception of the new one.
Of course, we all read it. So I just provided that to you as well.
I have it by my nightstand, so...
Ah, it helps you go to sleep, then, huh?
Yes.
Good. So that's all. I just wanted to give that to you. As always, if you have any questions about anything, I'm in the city attorney's office, and you know, you should, second floor, right next to the elevator, you can contact staff and get in contact with me very easily. Anything comes up, you can also email me, just anything, okay? So that's all.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
That's why we like to have you back, all you do. Okay, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Ortiz, you have anything?
I forget every time we get to this one, so no, not today.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to...
Yeah, it's been a while since we last met, probably like two months or so. But since then, I accepted a new job working for the Sea of Beverly Hills as a city planner.
Oh, how nice.
So I've been there for like a month, a little over a month now, yeah. And then congratulations to you for joining our team.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah. Any comments?
Well, I'd just like to say thank you all for having me here. Nice to have the first meeting about, and I'm just looking forward to working with everyone, and that's about it. Thank you to the staff for an orientation and bringing me on, and I'm looking forward to this. Thanks.
Well, we're really happy to have you with us, and I know that we're going to continue having a really, really good planning commission. We have for many, many years. We very, work very closely with one another, and we get along with each other. That's the good part. Okay, if there isn't anything further from the commissioners, then these meetings are adjourned at 6:42. Thank you very much.
Gavel?
I'm sorry.
Now we're official.